My microphone. So we're, we have a motion to receive the minutes from our March 24th meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. That's carried. Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please? Councillor Davison, Councillor Calver, all in favor? It's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? None declared. The first item is the Warden's report. Could I get a motion to receive that, please, from Councillor Hegedorn? Councillor Fritsch, any discussion? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Matters for consideration. Number one is the naturally LNA activation fund. Stephen, did you want to address this?
I can just, yeah, very, very quickly, for sure. So in front of you is a recommendation for projects, events to be approved as our Phase Two or Round Two of our Naturally LNA Activation Fund. And as you're aware, there's $40,000 annually that's divided $10,000 per municipality for events that really help us develop the Naturally LNA brand. So in front of you, you have kind of a slate of candidates and projects that our Economic Development Coalition Subcommittee has basically analyzed and reviewed and are passing along for your approval. One note is that we still have some money available to distribute in Addington Highlands. We're working on a couple of different projects right now, and we hope that we'll be able to bring those forward through the spring and summer for spend in 2024. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of this information. Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Paul? In that case, I need a motion to receive and to approve the applications that have been laid out in the report. Councillor Hogg and Councillor Richardson, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks. Item two is updates to the acronym that I'm not going to say. The Childcare Workforce Strategy and Canada-Wide Early Learning. Canada-Wide Early Learning? You can read it. Ms. Jenny, did you want to address this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and through you to council. I really don't have a lot to add to this, other than we were very pleased to see that the wage floor was increasing, as well as the ceiling, for childcare wages, because it will really help with retaining staff, attracting staff to the childcare sector. So we were very happy to see that, and we were very happy to see that it was retroactive to January 1st, 2024. So we didn't receive the information until late March, so we are working on getting that information out to the operators, how it will impact the operators, and how we can issue out the retroactive funding. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions or comments on this item? It's a fairly substantial boost from '23 to '24, which is good, and then another dollar a year roughly for a couple of years. So I hope it does attract more people to that sector. It's critical. All in favor? Oh, I didn't get a mover yet. We need to do that. Councillor Townend and Councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Item three is the National Housing Strategy Funding. Ms. Jenny, did you want to carry on and elaborate on this one a little bit?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So this one came as quite a surprise to most people in the province. We had already received our funding allocations. We received them for three years, so we had the '22, '23, '23, '24, '24, '25. So we have been advised that the federal government is withholding $355 million that it would normally send to the province, which they would then flow out to the municipalities under the programs of the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative and the Canada-Ontario Housing, Community Housing Initiative, as well as also affecting the COB benefits, which is the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit. So it's a significant impact to all the municipalities across the province, and we're all quite concerned, because these monies are used for repairs within our social housing units, repairs with our nonprofit housing providers, rent supplements, the Ontario Renovates Program, and a multitude of things like that. So it's quite concerning, because that's a significant impact. With Pallas locally, we have just under 150 rent supplements with private landlords. So that really put those into jeopardy, so we had to do a quick shift to move all of those expenditures under the Homelessness Prevention Program, which of course is going to put pressure on that program, because that's a significant amount of money that was not historically paid through the Homelessness Prevention Program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions on this issue? Yes, Councillor Hegedorn.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you for the overview on the impacts. If I remember correctly, it wasn't that long ago we got, we received information about provincial funding reductions, and now we've got this sudden federal reduction. I was wondering if you could just elaborate a little more, like the cumulative effects of the reduction in funding from both levels of government, the impacts on the counties? So we can, not being on Pallas, I'd just like to make sure I understand the full picture.
Thanks for that question. So there's been a number of funding reductions in a number of different programs. So under the childcare programs, there's been a reduction in funding from 10% administration costs to 5% administration costs. We also have a new funding formula coming out, which was, or is expected to take effect in September. We have not seen what that funding formula looks like, so we don't know if there are any additional impacts on the childcare system in relation to that new funding formula. With the Ontario Works Program, there was a significant decrease in 2024. There was a smaller decrease in 2023 as a result of the implementation of the Employment Services Transformation Program, which essentially removed the employment assistance piece from Pallas staff and moved it to the Service System Manager, which is Serco, who uses the Employment Ontario offices. So we've been able to mitigate that for 2024, and we're looking at strategies to further mitigate that in 2025. And now with this, this reduction of funding, it's about $500, sorry, $936,000, just because of this reduction. At this point, we don't know what the full impacts are going to be, if Ontario and the federal government are going to come to an agreement. If they do come to an agreement, that's great, but we still don't know what changes may occur as a result of that new agreement, in terms of what those dollars can be used for. So currently, we use them for rent supplement tenants, we use them for repairs to our social housing, to, for our nonprofits to make repairs, those kinds of things. We don't know what any new guidelines will look like, and at this point in time, the OFI and COCHE guidelines are not available. So we'll have to see what happens and if there's changes. So they might, the federal government is really, according to the press, seems to be really focused on additional affordable housing. So repairs, as an example, with our nonprofits and with our local housing corporation, that doesn't add units when we do repairs. It stops units from being taken away from the system. So the new guidelines could come down that it has to be used to increase the number of units. And if that's the case, that could have significant impacts, because we're still going to have to do repairs on our local housing corporation. So really, the impacts are really, really unknown at this point in time. They could be significant. The federal government, according to the press, has said that if Ontario and the federal government don't reach a deal, that the federal government would just fund municipalities directly. But again, we don't know what that looks like, we don't know what the dollars look like, or any of those kinds of things. So I'm afraid, I don't have a very good answer for you, other than to say there's a lot of unknowns, and there could be significant impacts, because if we're not able to use it for repairs, that money has to come from somewhere to keep our units in good repair for our tenants to live in. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, Brenda has something to add.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Lynn, I'm wondering if you could also explain to council rent supplements and the kinds of impacts. Like, we're going to mitigate this by using the HPP funding, but if we didn't have that, the kinds of impacts this could have on people receiving rent supplements, could you give them a sense of how serious that could be for individuals?
I can. Thanks for that question. That is a really serious concern for us. So we have just under 150 rent supplements right now, and what a rent supplement means is that basically the person lives in a private market unit from a private landlord, and their, their rent is based on the market. So as an example, the rent on the unit might be $1,100 for a one-bedroom unit. However, the person is low income, so if we have a rent supplement agreement with that landlord, 30% of their income is what will be charged as rent by the landlord. So say it's, that's $200, but the landlord needs to make up that $900, and Pallas makes up that $900, so that person has an affordable place to live in the private market. So if we were to all of a sudden lose just under 150 rent supplements, that's just under 150 people who no longer can afford their rent, because it can be a significant subsidy that the person's receiving in order to stay housed. And really, we don't want those to end, which is why we pivoted very quickly to move that under the Homelessness Prevention Program and made some adjustments there in order to keep those people housed, because we know it's, it's much better for the person, it's much cheaper on the healthcare system, the justice system, mental health system, all of those systems, to keep people housed. It's much better all around to do that. So that was a real priority for us. So we have a lot of concerns that if, if they don't come to an agreement, or if they really significantly change the parameters of what we're able to use those funds for, rent supplements is not something we want to let go, because that is really keeping people housed and keeping them permanently housed, which is very, very important.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, Councillor Fritsch.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Lynn, so I guess with the current uncertainty, what is the, sort of a couple of questions tied together? Is the fiscal year, the first question, is it like January to December for, for these funds that you're getting? And obviously, that leads into the next question. If we, I know you're pivoting some of this stuff, but how long can you pivot? And because before you utilize funds, I guess, that are allotted to other programs or other activities?
Those are great questions. Thank you. So the province and the federal governments both issue on a fiscal calendar, so their year runs April 1st to March 31st. So this all took effect as of April 1st of this year. So we're hoping that they get it resolved quickly and that we're able to move forward. So at this point in time, we've not moved forward on anything. It is significantly going to put pressure on the Homelessness Prevention Program. However, we can't use any of those dollars from the Homelessness Prevention Program for unit repairs and those kinds of things. So that, at this point in time, really, that's a hole, and the only place that that hole can be filled today is through taxation and through municipal funding. So at this point in time, we've put repairs off, in that we're waiting and hoping that they come to a deal, so that we're able to move forward on some of those repairs that need to be done. But the Homelessness Prevention Program can take up the slack for the rent supplements. I don't know how far into the future, we could do it for this fiscal year, if we needed to. We're hoping that they're going to come to a deal, and then we'll be able to do some rejigging of that, because really, what the impact to the Homelessness Prevention Program is, is that we're going to not be able to fund community partners, as we have been able to fund them in the past. And those, that funding is really providing, funding to fill gaps in service. So additional mental health services, legal services to help people stay housed. What else? There's a homelessness worker through Community Health Centre. There's a lot of different programs that we've been able to fund to fill gaps, to help people stay housed, and on the long term. So that could be in jeopardy at some point in time in the future.
Thank you, Lynn, and maybe just a comment, which, you know, if this ratcheted downstream for a few months, for example, just the repairs, you're, you're running right through and halfway through a peak, I'm going to say, construction season, so to speak. Yeah. Valuable time lost. Thank you.
Yeah, Brenda, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, again. Just back on to the rent subs. Could you give council a sense of how the province used to fund it and now does not?
So a lot of our rent supplements were funded through the Investments in Affordable Housing Program and the CIF Program, and my apologies, the, the long form of CIF is not in my brain at the moment, so I apologize for that. But those programs all came to an end as of March 31st. So our original plan was to use some OFI money, some COCHE money, and some HPP, Homelessness Prevention Program money, in order to cover off those rent supplements, and that would reduce the impacts on the other budgets. However, that, of course, now is not going to be able to happen. So all of the rent supplement costs have been moved under the Homelessness Prevention
Thank you. Anything further? Yes, Councillor Hegedorn.
Thank you. Just one follow-up question. I know there's an update from Pallas later in the, in the agenda, but with this directly affecting Pallas, I'm assuming it was discussed at the last meeting, and if so, was there much of an outcome from that meeting?
Thanks for that question. Yes, there was discussion about this and what the impacts could be. So our committee also passed a motion to write a letter to send to both Lennox and Addington Council and Prince Edward County Council, to send to the province and the federal government, to try and, you know, work out a deal and those kinds of things. So that letter will be coming. Pallas Committee was just last week, so we haven't had enough time to draft that with enough of the background detail. So that letter will be coming to the next county council.
Thank you for that update. That's what I was hoping was happening, because my personal thoughts are, we need to jump on this. Both levels of government have cut funding. They're in a bit of a standoff, and our residents are paying the price. And so I'll hold off, but I was, I was trying to figure out how to draft a resolution to be brought forward under notice of motion, but I'll wait for that to, for the Pallas report to come before council, before I take any further steps.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Hegedorn. Anything further? So politically, this is a bit confusing. It seems that the federal funding that's being withheld is as a result of the federal government objecting to the way the province was distributing that money? Did the province change the way they were distributing that money, or did the federal guidelines or requirements for distributing that money change?
My understanding, it's actually not the distribution of the money, it's related to targets, and what the province is counting as part of their targets, the federal government doesn't agree with or want them to be counted as new units in affordable housing. So that's my understanding, and that's from reading the papers and those kinds of things. So I'm not privy to any of the negotiations or anything at all like that, so, but that's my understanding from what I've heard in the press.
Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot, Brenda. Go ahead.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, just one more point. We're also concerned that the province is no longer funding rent supplements. I mean, we got into this program from the province, and they've been paying, and all of the sudden, this is like a perfect storm. So March comes, and they're no longer funding rent supplements. Okay, so we'll have to use our COCHE OFI money to fund that. Oh, no, we don't have COCHE OFI money, so we'll use HPP money, and that's the backstop, because there's nothing else beyond that except property tax dollars. So it's not just the province and the feds getting in line with what's going to count and what's not, and having the money flow. There's also the concern that they've decided, the province has decided to no longer fund rent supplements.
Okay, so stay tuned is kind of where we're at. All right, I guess I need a motion to receive that report. Councillor Davison, Councillor Calver, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. A happier subject, the solar eclipse. We've got a report from Deputy Chief Burns, who couldn't be here this evening. Oh, he's on the screen.
Mike is.
Mike, Mike is going to do it. Mr. Adair, welcome. The floor is yours.
Hi, through you.
Go ahead.
That's great. Thank you, through the Warden, through you, Warden. Yes, this is Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Robert's report, and I'm presenting on behalf of him this evening, and also like to thank him for 18 months of some good work in preparing for the solar eclipse. And it truly was a demonstration of, I'll just provide a couple of highlights, and the report is before you. It truly was a demonstration of working together within the county, interdepartmentally, as well as collaboration with system partners. And, you know, we did learn some lessons from it. There was a debrief, and some of the things that we discovered, like we need some more two-rate radios, are already being addressed in the grant funding that we received. So real proud of the work that Lennox and Addington did in this, and I turn the microphone back over to you, Warden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adair. Any, any questions or comments? And I have a motion to receive that report. Councillor Fritsch, Councillor Hegedorn, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Advisory Committee Recommendations and Reports, Accessibility Advisory Committee Report. Jennifer, you're, you're the new Secretary of that committee, if I'm not mistaken. Did you have anything to elaborate on?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just like to highlight that the, excuse me, committee endorsed a resolution from Prince Edward County regarding the creation of a municipal accessibility fund provided by the province, and the committee further recommended that both the county and lower-tier councils support the resolution. The resolution follows in the resolution section of this agenda for council's consideration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions from council on this? Can I get a motion to receive that, then? Councillor Davison, Councillor Fritsch, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Emergency Services Advisory Committee. Is this Mr. Adair, or who's going to take questions on this one?
Certainly, the report's before you, council, through the Warden, and I'm happy to take any questions with respect to this report.
Any questions or comments on this report? Seeing none, can I get a motion to receive? Councillor Richardson, Councillor Calver, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. The John M. Parrott Center Compliance Report. Angela's not here, so Brenda will address this one.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Here's the chuckling. But I will point out to you that when you look on our compliance report, you can see that we're at 94% capacity roughly, and just want to point out to you that the province has a rule that you have to be at 97% capacity, or they claw money back. And they paused that during COVID. It's back in play now. However, we have been in outbreak with COVID and respiratory and that sort of thing, so at that time, the beds don't count if they're vacant, so we're fine at this point. But just to let you know, we're, we're mindful of it, we're watching it. It means we have to have a quick turnaround time when a resident, a resident is discharged. We always have to maintain the 97%. So I just wanted to let you know, if you see that 94 and are concerned, we had been in outbreaks, so it got waived for us at that time, and we're, we're watching that. Happy to answer any questions that you might have, though.
Questions or comments on this report? I have one. So I understand that there, there are a number of outbreaks, but do we not have a waiting list for, for the Parrott Center?
Absolutely. But it takes a turn, a certain amount of turnaround time after somebody's vacated, because a person has to, you magically get a call, okay, you can come in now, you have to get your life in order, you have to make some decisions, have you changed your mind? Or like, there's a lot of feelings and emotions that go along with that, so you have to give people time to digest that and get in. So they're, it's not just a snap your fingers and the next day they're, they're at the front door, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything further? Can I have a motion to receive that report? Councillor Hogg, Councillor Townend, all in favor? It's carried. Thanks. Committee reports by members of council. Anyone have anything to bring forward on a committee they're involved in? Nothing at this time. County Department Activity Reports, starting with Administration.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Questions for Brenda? Nothing? Finance, Mr. Day.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I have nothing further to highlight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for Mr. Day? Nothing? Pallas? Ms. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The only thing I'd like to highlight is that we've been, recently been doing an update of our centralized waitlist for housing. So you will notice when you look at the performance metrics, that you're going to see a significant drop in the number of people waiting for subsidized housing. So what we did is we sent out review letters to all of the people who are on the waiting list, and there was just over 1,100 in total. At this point in time, we're probably going to end up with just under 400 people on the waitlist. So we sent out the review to the last known address that we had on file. Applicants do have the responsibility to let us know if they've moved, if their phone numbers have changed, their email addresses, et cetera. And we're supposed to do this on a fairly regular basis. So this wasn't done during COVID, but based on all of the reviews that have come back, there'll be less than 400. We do have a strategy in place that if someone calls us in six months and says, hey, where am I on the list? And we find that they're not on the list, but they were on the list, and they just didn't receive the package, they didn't send it in, for whatever reason, those kinds of things, we will be able to grandfather those people back onto the list with their original application date, just to be fair, and make sure that everybody who's served is served well. So I think that's the only thing I need to highlight in this report. So you will see a significant drop, but don't be, I just, I wanted you to be prepared for that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Jenny? So how often did we used to do that review, Lynn, before COVID?
Every few years. It's supposed to be done, so we've, we're also coming up with a strategy that it will be maintained better, more frequently. So we're coming up with that strategy now, as to when that will happen, and that doesn't, that process doesn't need to start happening until 2025. But we really want to try and get a handle on that, and municipalities have struggled with this forever and a day. It's, it's hard to contact people. You really don't want to take them off the list if you don't have to, because once they're off the list, they're off the list, and they have to reapply with a new date. So municipalities are very cautious about removing people, which is why we've come up with that strategy, that if they contact us before the end of the year, we will put them back on with their original date.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're on to Community and Development. Mr. Paul.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of things to highlight. Further to the eclipse, a big thanks to library staff. They gave out approximately 3,600 certified glasses for the eclipse and hosted workshops throughout the two weeks leading up to it, and had about just under 600 people attend those. Those were, were a huge hit, and thanks for staff for putting that on. On the museum side, I've just provided a breakdown of all different programs and events. Had a busy March schedule at the museum itself, and over 500 people attended those. On the economic development side, we've just launched a campaign that's really focused on talent attraction and bringing new residents and new talent into Lennox and Addington County to, you know, fill some of the job opportunities that we have now and in the future. So we'll be targeting the greater Toronto area, and this will be a 12-month campaign, and it's really going to be a continued part of how we promote our county and our Naturally LNA brand. And then lastly, this week, I believe it's tomorrow, Annie or Anna, our county planner, is meeting with the MAPFRA to discuss the prime agricultural land use designation in the county, and that's really tied to stone mills request. So we'll have more information coming forward on that. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Paul? Okay, we will move on to Emergency Services EMS Activity Report. Is Mr. Adair going to address that one? Brenda?
Thank you, through the Warden, again. So you have the report in front of you, and I'd be pleased to receive any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Adair? I did have a question. You did a report earlier on the eclipse preparation and so on, and I'd been hearing the media, places like Tinks and Niagara Falls were expecting hundreds of thousands, or even millions in the case of Niagara Falls. Did, did we notice any of the influx that we prepared for in that emergency service planning, say, down along the lake shore, or any, anywhere like that?
We did have reports of some of the parks at capacity in terms of people lining up in green space to look at the eclipse, but certainly not in green space to look at the Eclipse, but certainly not anything to the extent that was being reported in terms of having 500,000 people show up to Kingston. And I certainly wouldn't want to comment on the numbers in, in, down in Niagara, but same sort of situation in terms of not getting those numbers.
Yeah, it's interesting. You know, I, sometimes you just sort of take numbers as they come at you. But I was wondering, what was that based on? Was there, were there surveys done, or was it just kind of a, an expectation or a gut feeling on the part of authorities that this is big and, and we could be overwhelmed?
It was based on historical data, mainly out of the last major event out of the United States and what transpired through all their debriefings and post operations reviews. And so, that's, that's what, what it was based on. And so, Emergency Management Ontario, along with the other, the other areas is what, where that was coming from. So, the last time, I think the data came from, if I'm not correct, was 2017. And, and certainly Robbie Burns would probably be able to, if he had more details, but from a high level, that's when, where it was coming from.
That's interesting. So, to some extent, probably the weather influenced people's, people's plans, because it was so uncertain and was, in fact, fairly cloudy in some places. Okay, thanks, Mr. Adair. Thank you.
Yeah, correct. And with our operations in terms of paramedic services, we did notice that it was full along the lakes, like that's where the sort of the intensity was occurring. And then we had an operations down in that area, just to make sure that we would be able to seamlessly, seamlessly operate should any, any issues occur, and so that people would have access to healthcare.
Great. Thank you. And I missed long-term care in the activity report. Brenda, did you want to take that one on?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. And as much as we're not happy with the province with the funding on the housing side, have to give credit where credit's due and say that the 6.6% funding for the level of care funding from the province is, is unprecedented. It really, it truly is. It's usually 1% or 2%. So, I mean, we're mandated to get to that four hours of care. They've come to the plate with the funding to help us do that. Have to give them credit for that, absolutely. Also want to point out that on the staffing supplement funding that you see there, we're really hoping that that can be used to top up our nurse practitioner. You recall that council, thankfully, we appreciate it, gave us the approval to do the top up, because the province was only willing to fund at a certain level, and it was just not possible to find a nurse practitioner at that level. So, we're hoping that we can utilize some of that money for that. And the other thing to point out was the one-time accommodation funding. It's primarily given to homes that aren't sprinkler, with the expectation they must use this money to be sprinkler. For those homes like us that are sprinkler, we're waiting to see what kinds of uses we can use that money for. So, that's, we'll get back to you with a report on that one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Counselor Fritsch?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I'm not, not expecting an answer on, on this question this evening. But I would, but there were some rumblings and some reports in the press about not being able to meet the four hours of care. So, I'm just curious, maybe at a future meeting, that perhaps Angela could give an update on, maybe her perspective of that, because if that became sort of a, on a broad scale, they're saying they couldn't meet it, then my question is, would the targets ever change?
Well, we're mandated that we must meet it by next year. And you recall in your budget, and, and we thank you for this, you agreed to add those new positions that will get us closer. So, I think, I think now we're, with those changes that you approved in the budget, we're at 3.8. So, this will certainly help us so that we can meet that target next year that we have to meet. So, so we will be there. And I just have to give the province credit for stepping up. We weren't expecting 6.6.
Okay, thank you. So, next one is Human Resources, and Trina is on a beach somewhere. So, Brenda's available.
I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Nothing. And finally, Infrastructure Services. Mr. Wager.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Warden. I don't have anything to add or highlight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Questions for Mr. Wager. I noted, coming back from Napanee today, that work is starting on 41. I realized there's already been stuff done, culvers, so on, but today there were flag people. There were delays, so. Were there? Yeah, so it's happening. And, and that, that project is basically scheduled to go through the, to the end of August or something? I, I forget the timeline there, Chris?
Yeah, the timeline is actually the end of August. They had to start early. It is a long job, so it goes from Cannon Road 12, heading south, to the Sucker Creek Bridge, just north of Napanee here. But we want it completed prior to the commencement of the school year for the fall, so it, it does have an end of August completion.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wager? Can I get a motion to receive all those reports? Counselor Davidson, Counselor Calver, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We have a couple of resolutions. The first one is from Loyalist Township. What are your wishes on this resolution? Counselor Hogg?
Motion to receive and support.
Thank you. Seconder for that. Counselor Townend, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. And from our neighbors in Prince Edward County, what is your decision on that one? Counselor Fritsch?
Motion to receive and support.
Seconder for that one. Counselor Hegedorn? All in favor? That's carried. I didn't think there'd be much objection to those two resolutions. Other business, statements by members. Notice of motion? Matters of urgency? None declared. We have to go into closed session pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act as amended. This part of the meeting will be closed to the public in order to adopt closed session minutes and to consider a matter in which information is explicitly supplied to the municipality in confidence. Can I have a motion to go in? Counselor Richardson and Counselor Davison, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we need to be offline for this one, too. Okay, thank you. We're back live after our closed session meeting. We had a closed session item dealing with the Loyalist Township Industrial Community Improvement Plan, Latham Pools. And I need, do I need a motion to? Okay, here's chapter and verse. In closed session, county council approved closed session minutes and reviewed information supplied in confidence to the county regarding an industrial community improvement plan in Loyalist Township. So, I will need a motion then, something to the effect that the tax incremental grant be provided to Latham Pools as part of the Loyalist Township Industrial Community Improvement Plan. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Sorry. Counselor Townend moved. Counselor Calver second that motion. Any further discussion? Very good. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Yeah, you can have that back. So, that's the end of our business for the evening. I think all I need at this point is the confirmation of proceedings by law. Counselor Richardson, Counselor Davison, all in favor? That's carried. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Hogg is eager, and Counselor Fritsch seconds. All in favor? That's carried. Thanks. Good to have you back, Henry.